Okay, let's call this meeting the Hayesville Planning Commission order. The first item of business is a roll call.
Blood.
Here.
Plummer.
Here.
Franken.
Here.
Azair.
Present.
Coleman. Atkins.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Next item of business was the special order, but we need to remove it. Turns out you only do that for the meeting at the meeting that you need that for. So we can just remove it from this with a motion and a second and a vote?
I make a motion to remove.
Item four.
Item four, yes.
I'll second.
Motion and second to remove item four, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item five, under new business, we have a public hearing to consider a zone change request from AA Residential.
You missed the minutes.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
You're right. Going back to item three, the minutes for August 11th, 2022.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Now on to item five. Public hearing to consider a zone change request from AA Residential District to A Residential District and B two, three, and four Family District. So, to protect the rights of all parties involved and in order to create an opportunity for everyone to speak their opinions and present information, the Hayesville Planning Commission follows a specific procedure in reaching a decision. A copy is available by the door. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are now formally open for a public hearing to consider a zone change request for the City of Hayesville. Do any members of the planning commission have a conflict of interest in this case? If so, would you please disqualify yourself for further action in this case? You may choose to speak as a member of the public. I have a conflict and will abstain from the vote, but we'll still conduct the meeting.
I have a conflict as well. I abstain.
Have any members received any written or electronic communications on this matter? So please read or describe them. Hearing none. Will staff please present the staff report for the proposed zone change?
Good evening. Before you assess report for the zone change, the applicant is applying for a zone change from AA Single Family Dwelling District to AA Single Family Dwelling District and B two, three, and four Family Dwelling District. A public hearing notice was published on August 4th and letters were mailed out to area residents within 200 feet to the northeast and west of the subject property as well as 1,000 feet to the west. Legal consideration of the finding effects from Chapter 16-700B of the zoning regulations provides specific measures for consideration by the planning commission when approving or not approving a rezoning request for a specific property. In order to properly make a recommendation to the city council, the planning commission must make specific and substantiated findings supporting its recommendation. I shall go through the eight factors. One, zoning use and character of the neighborhood. The subject property is vacant and currently being used for agriculture. Adjacent properties are developed, A, single family, and D, like commercial to the north, A, single family to the south and east, and agriculture to the west. It is not uncommon for new development to have a variety of A, single family, and B two, three, and four dwelling. Two, suitability of the subject property for the uses of which it has been restricted. The property is currently zoned AA Single Family as it was recently annexed into the city. The uses permitted in A, single family, and B, two, three, and four family are suitable for the site and are compatible with surrounding zoning and land use. Three, extent to which removal of the restriction will detrimentally affect the nearby property. The property is currently surrounded by a single family dwelling. Staff does not foresee detrimental impacts of to nearby property if the request is granted. The property will have the same size, height, and setback regulations as the existing zoning. Four, length of time subject property has remained vacant as zoned. The property is in the process of being platted and was last sold in earlier in this year in 2022. Five, the relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare as compared to the loss in value or the hardship imposed upon the applicant. The health and safety and welfare matters associated with the proposed zone change should not be significantly different than those associated with the existing single family zoning. Six, the conformance of requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive plan. Hayesville's land use plan identifies the property as residential use. The comprehensive plan provides the following goal for housing and is to provide a variety of housing choices for current and future populations. Seven, the impact of the proposed development on community facilities, municipal waters who are available to the property, municipal services such as police and fire protection are already in the area, and no additional burden is anticipated that cannot be accommodated with existing resources. This lot is located west of South Meridian Avenue, a two-lane highway. Eight, opposition or support of neighborhood residents. We received five comments regarding this zone change, but only one in opposition. On August 5th, Mr. Davis called and asking about the location of the property. He also wanted to know if the water tower would be able to handle all this. I told him the city water supply could handle the new development. He also suggested that a map be attached to the letter when this goes out. I informed him where the location of the property was and thanked him for the advice for making sure a map was attached for future notices. I did tell him I could provide a map if necessary and where it was located on our city's webpage. On August 5th, Mrs. Hammond of Bridgeport Properties called requesting a map of the proposed zone change. She mentioned having a buyer in the area and was interested in building duplexes. I emailed her a map of the proposed zone change area. On August 8th, Mr. Collins called about the location of the proposed zone change. He had thought it was scheduled for the August 11th meeting. I reviewed the ownership notification list and found that they had received the notification for the August 25th public hearing. I directed him to the city's webpage that has the planning commission information for public hearings. I emailed him all the information concerning the preliminary plan and zone change. He also asked for me to forward this to his wife. On August 8th, Mr. Kelsey called and left a voicemail opposing the development. He stated he was the developer of Country Lakes. Also on August 10th, Mr. Kelsey called and left a message up to the mayor, repeating his concerns about the development. On August 9th, Mrs. Clements called asking about the location of the proposed zone change and what was planned to be built there. I informed her where the property was located. Nine, the recommendation of the staff. Based off of the preceding facts, staff is recommending the approval of the zone change as requested. This new development is in compliance with our growth plan and also meets the current housing trends as noted in the state housing study from 2021 by providing a variety of housing for the community. Currently, we have very few residential lots for sale in town, and this will meet the needs of our community. The applicant is here to answer any questions you may have.
First, any questions for staff from any commissioners? None? Advocate for the agent? Please state your name.
Good evening, Rebecca Melius with PEC, the agent for the applicant. I do have Andrew here as well, who can share a little bit more about the business model of the proposed development if there's any questions about what the project will look like. Overall, just want to share appreciation for our review of the project. We're excited to get some more housing built here in Hayesville, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the advocate?
Thank you.
Would you like to speak or you want to just wait? Okay. Now's the time for any member of the public to speak. You will be allotted five minutes. If you are presenting good factual information, this time may be extended by vote. I have two here in opposition. Looks like Joe McGregor is first.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come here and speak tonight. I speak on behalf of the Southampton HOA neighborhood. We have 85 homes in our neighborhood, and on behalf of the board, we oppose any development of duplexes near our neighborhood. We have concerns for any potential crime that may come with duplexes that come with that and the devaluation of our property values. So that's where we stand, and thank you.
Todd Williams is the only other name I have.
My name's Todd Williams. I live at 827 South Lakeview over there in Country Lakes. Gone around and talked to quite a few of our neighbors, also run the Country Lakes Facebook page. Getting a lot of opposition in regards to this as well as for myself from this standpoint. You know, we didn't move into a neighborhood and, you know, want rentals and those type of properties near our homes. Myself, when I built five years ago, that wasn't something that I was, you know, in my search criteria when it comes to building a house, you know? You tend, when you build a house, you stay away from things like that. Just also talking to other neighbors in the neighborhood as well, they feel like it's going to be an eyesore eventually. On top of, you know, when you put rentals and stuff like that near people's properties that, you know, they're investing money in, your property values are going to go down. Your taxes are going to go up because of the cost of the new development that, you know, along with the duplexes. Some other things that were brought up that I would like to mention is all the kids that are going to be in these duplexes and whatnot. Freeman right now is at capacity. I mean, if anybody picks up a kid at Freeman, you know, it's a disaster. It takes 15 minutes to get your kids out. That's ridiculous. You know, and you go, you know, stabbing some more, stabbing some more, you know, houses, duplexes in there. And now we're talking, our taxes are going to go up because now we're going to need to go to the school district for a bond because we're going to need to build a new school. HMS, I mean, and HW, I mean, they're right there with it. So, I mean, now you're talking, what, one, two, three schools? I mean, nobody here wants to pay for more bonds, let alone the mill levy for Hayesville. I mean, it's creeping with, you know, a lot of the other higher mill levies in Central County. So, on behalf of, you know, a lot of people that I've spoke with in the Country Lakes edition, we are opposed of this and hope you guys consider, you know, on behalf of the Hayesville community, I mean, you guys are, you know, the city is wanting to do incentives for new businesses and whatnot. And here we are, and we're going to throw some, you know, some more duplexes that are already over there on the east side of the tracks up against Carla. You got a mobile home park, you got duplexes, you got people that have nice houses over there, you know? Why not try to bring some businesses in instead of more houses, you know? Or, you know, let's go about this a little different way. And, you know, as far as the letter goes to the residents of the neighborhood, you sent letters out addressing this, you know, 200 feet to the south and 1,000 feet to the west. 1,000 feet to the west is the middle of a farm field. 200 feet to the south, you're capturing a very limited amount of houses. I live on the south end of the neighborhood, and I dang sure don't want to drive by duplexes, let alone, you know, deal with the property taxes going down and everything. And there's several people here tonight that if I wouldn't have seen the letter, let alone from our ward council member, I wouldn't have known about this. And speaking to, in regards to the council members that are with their wards that are over there, they've spoken their concerns about this. And obviously, at the last city council meeting, they voted it down and plan to continue voting this down. So, you know, we didn't want to buy houses near developments of duplexes. So, again, I hope you guys consider this and really think about it. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other member from the public like to speak?
Is it too late to fill out a card?
No. Come up, and you can fill out a card after the fact, and we can just state your name and your address for the record.
I am Jared Poppy. I live at 2104 West Schoolhouse. I actually have a property that views right, the view is back to that field. I have two small children. It is very, very congested for school, you know? Hayesville invested in a nice sidewalk so the kids could get to school. It is an absolute mess. I don't trust my kids even walking down that sidewalk right now, let alone adding more confusion and congestion and chaos to the process of getting them to school. I have, I've invested in my property as well, tried to make the neighborhood look good. The last thing me and my wife and family want to look at, looking out our back door, is duplexes and rentals. Thank you.
Would you fill out a card and hand it to Jonathan?
Sure.
Now that you're done?
Sure.
Anybody else? Same deal, state your name and address, and then fill out a card when you're done. Or before, that's fine, too.
Let's see. My name's Jeremy Watkins. I live at 574 South Schoolhouse. We'll go after his real quick. Speaking on congestion, it's terrible. Not only getting in and out of the school is terrible, getting in and out of there, you've got tons of kids that are walking down the sidewalk, just like he's speaking about. You also still have kids walking on the other side of the road that are walking along the road. This morning, there was a little girl walking along the side of the road, and all I thought was somebody's going to hit her. And to speak to that, very last spring, just right towards the end of the school year, some little kid got hit on the bike. It's dangerous. I'm glad the sidewalk's there, but you're going to, like he was speaking about, you're going to add congestion. Not to mention, as Todd spoke about, schools overpopulated. We don't have any more room for kids in that school. There's plenty of things we could do to alleviate that, but I don't understand how we're going to fit in multifamily homes that have lots more kids into that school, not to mention the Hayesville Middle School. And I'm not sure of West, but if I'm correct, most of those kids are all going to go to the middle school in the middle of town. As far as it's not a detriment to property value, I don't understand how. When we were moving to Hayesville, which I've grown up in Hayesville all my life, we were moving back to town, and there was, there was nice houses that are right there by, on the other side of the tracks of Carla that duplexes were built by, and there's some nice houses in there, but we didn't want any of those houses that were for sale because of the property value that we do go down. And speaking of that, I had a friend that lived in those houses, and when those duplexes got built, he lost money on his house. We absolutely picked that area because it was a nice area with nice open spaces, and even though they're still building houses there in that area on the backside, it's the same type of house. It only adds value because the neighborhood is nice. It doesn't drop the value in the house. I'm sure everybody else, like we did, got the notification that our property taxes are going to go up. Oh, our taxes are going to go up, but we're not going to see anything out of that because the value of our house is going to drop because of duplexes that are being built there. Let's see here. As far as, I don't know what the need for community housing is in Hayesville. As far as I'm concerned, there's other places that are far better fit for that, that you could move it to. But one of those things is, we're always talking about, I know I talk about with my friends and everybody else that I know of that talks about is, why can't we get more and better things in Hayesville? Well, when you're bringing in multifamily houses, which I get it, you have to have some of that, and I don't have anything against people like that, but it does drop property values down, and nobody wants to move to the little places that you do have in Hayesville because of that. Everybody sees what multifamily housing does to property values. I don't have a problem with rezoning that for businesses or something along those lines because they're going to take care of those things, and that only brings in more value to the area. The last thing I would say is, I hope for everybody that's voting for this that doesn't live in the area realize that we're all here telling you that we don't want it, and if it was the other way, we would listen to what you had to say if you said, I don't want this being built near my house, and I would understand that. So please just take that into consideration. Thanks.
Anybody else? Any questions for the public from the commission? None? Does the applicant wish to rebut anything?
Yes, please.
So my name's Andrew Reese with Banister Real Estate and Skyview, which is the owner and developer on this project. I value the opinion of what's been said here, and I'd like to take just some time here to try to speak to some of those thoughts. So, is it all right if I stand off to the side?
Yep.
With the plaque? I want to start just by first noting, it sounds the big concern of value. I've heard about, so value, concern of maybe some safety, which are all things that I believe we've taken into consideration. I do also want to start by saying this whole neighborhood is not set up for duplex housing. It's a part of the development, but it is not at all the entirety of the development. We are doing stuff similar to this in other areas. And so, some of the things that I really want to first speak to is the duplexes in general. So, I know there's the concern of property values and how they're taken care of. The way we set up our developments in other places is we actually set up an HOA for the duplexes. The HOA is responsible for maintaining the yards. So the HOA controls the watering and the mowing on the properties, which we feel has helped address some of the concerns of lack of maintenance on some of these things. You know, the, in addition to the values, these things, I mean, we're building similar product, and I don't know if anybody can really see what this is, but the similar product we've been building in some other areas, Mulvane, Bel Air.
Do you have more and more company?
Yeah. They're valued at $350,000. They rent out for $1,500 a side, which I've got a list here of all the tenants that we've got that we've recently filled into Mulvane, and it's part in here, and I can just rattle off some of the occupations. Just 13 of them. We've got a registered nurse and owner of a landscaping company, software engineer, quality assurance specialist, financial controller, principal of a high school, production manager, engineer, project manager, nurse practitioner, contract negotiator, evidence supervisor, and a supply chain analyst. So where I'm going with that is, you know, these aren't, I hope people understand what we're trying to build here. They're valued at $350,000, rented out at $1,500 a side with professionals that live in these houses. Again, speaking to some of that, the front portion of this is duplexes, and then over back half is all going into single family housing. Again, we've done this in other places. If we felt that values really hurt the real estate to that degree, we, I mean, we wouldn't make it to where you're driving through the duplex area to get to our single family housing. I, you know, they have their place. No, I don't believe that we need to fill this whole thing with duplexes. But I, you know, there's a need in Hayesville that I've had conversation with. The housing study for Hayesville as well as the state housing study has acknowledged this. The price point of homes that will develop out in the back part is going to be 250 to 350 in price point. I'm not pretty enough to speak to the values of the development, Country Lakes, but, you know, I feel like from a macro standpoint, that price point fits very nicely in that location. I think it'll give diverse options for people when it comes to renting and purchasing. You know, again, I've spoke to the maintenance on the duplexes with our other developments. We've, we've worked with the city to create parks in the neighborhood. If the city's open to it, we have a large reserve on the west portion of this property to help with the drainage. You know, we would, we'd be more than willing to carve off a portion of that to create a city park. We've done pickleball courts, we've done playground equipment, we'd be open to conversation on what that could look like. But we do want to, we do want to bring a community into the area and not just, you know, what sounds like a scary place of duplexes and bad things, because that's not at all what we've, what we've done to date. So, hopefully that addressed some of the thoughts and questions that were brought up. Yep.
So, I was just keeping notes. By my tally, you've covered taxes and some of the other things, but what you haven't covered, and maybe this is Rebecca, not you, but the issue of crime, the issue of the schools and the congestion and the need to bring business to the City of Hayesville.
So I'll let, I'll let her speak to the traffic, and I know there's been some studies that have taken place on this project, so I'll let her speak to that. As far as schools go, I don't want this to sound like a, you know, a naive statement, but I, you know, a lot of places want schools to grow. That's part of the growth in a community, you know? And that's by bringing kids in, but you can't really do that without more, you know, residential opportunities to do so. So, you know, from a school standpoint, you always want the best, obviously, but I feel like this should hopefully help standard some growth in the school system. I'll let her speak to the traffic situation.
So, the two major concerns that have been brought up are obviously pedestrian congestion was what I was hearing the most of, in particular, safety and getting up to the school. I think we, the biggest way we can impact that is adding connectivity, which we're planning on, so having internal street sidewalks adjacent to the streets, and then potentially working with Hayesville staff. The addition of development here obviously is going to add some potential pedestrian congestion. The analysis that's been completed from trip generation for the traffic congestion has proved negligible to traffic on Meridian itself. If we were to add more, then we would have to reevaluate that, but at this time, based on the number of homes and the dwelling units that are proposed, we're just, just under that threshold where improvements would need to be made along Meridian Avenue. So, we've been coordinating with, with City of Hayesville staff for the So, um, we've been coordinating with, with city of Hayesville staff for that, um, we obviously can work, continue to work with them. One of the comments, I will say, and the plat is obviously the next item to be heard, but we have met with Cedric County Fire Department who serves this area. We've worked with them to come up with a, um, a plan for how to better serve the development, since it does have a single point of access. Uh, I was planning on addressing that with the plat, but I'll bring that up now, um, to make sure that they can properly serve it. But, we came to a, a conclusion that both were agreeable to, and so I've, I've heard no concern from a, a crime or uh, public safety standpoint from those that have reviewed it that we need to address at this time. But obviously, um, if that's a community concern, we, as a development team, can work with city staff, um, for what we can do to help mitigate that through our development process. So, that's what I have to add. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close public hearing.
A motion in second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Public comment is now closed for commission action, and the floor is open to commissioners' comments regarding the following criteria, everything that's laid out in the staff report. Discussion.
There was one comment about, uh, this has been brought up at the city council before. Just wondering.
So the zone change has not been brought up at city council, the annexation was brought up at city council, that's the only thing that has been taken to city council. The, uh, zone change has not, it goes after a plain commission.
That's what I thought, okay.
And the result of the annex discussion?
The annexation was approved, um, there was a misunderstanding of how the process worked, um, in that discussion, but the annexation does not control the zoning of the property. It's just being incorporated into the city.
I don't really have any questions, I will comment that this is a very nice plat that you guys put forward that has almost every question I could have answered on it.
We're just talking about the zone change now, that's right?
I know. So.
Questions? Concerns? General comments? No? Well, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to change the zoning classification of property west of South Meridian Avenue from A, A, single-family dwelling to, single-family district to A, single-family dwelling district, and B, two, three, four family dwelling district, based on the findings of fact, and forward a recommendation of approval to the city council.
Is there a second?
I second.
Have a motion in second, Jonathan, you, you wanna just do a roll call?
Sure. Blood?
Yes.
Plummer?
Yes.
Franken?
Upstain.
Azir?
Upstain.
Coleman? Atkins?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Item five, number B, preliminary plat of Wheatland Village addition.
Are you guys gonna present it?
Before use the preliminary plat review for the Wheatland Village addition to Hayesville. The applicant is asking if the property to be pledged to build single-family homes and two, three, and four family homes on it. It is sixty-four point three oh six acres, the property was annexed on August eighth of this year. Upon receiving the preliminary plat, it was sent out for review. I received the following responses. From Cedric County Public Works, email asking if the developer was requesting an annexation, I said yes. For the county stormwater, was requesting a meeting with the agent or engineer to ensure downstream impact to Co- Country Lakes is appropriately considered, especially the area discharging from Reserve A before development of the drainage plan. County Public Works requested the following. Three hundred to four hundred feet separation between this church driveway and the proposed Wheatland Drive. The applicant showed guarantee of the closure of any driveway openings located in area of, areas of complete access control. And the legal description, except the east sixty feet thereof, should be removed as that portion will be dedicated with the plat. Legal description goes on this, to the section line. The proposed RW line is dimensioned but not displayed. On the final plat, the proposed sixty-foot RW line should be bold. I forwarded these e- emails to PEC for them to review. From Hayesville's Public Works, I have the following questions. Should it read Jubilee Circle as the street ends in a cul-de-sac, as a street normally has a cul-de-sac, an off-street would be a court? And the question was, why is this addition not using the existing sanitary sewer on the west end, south ends of the property? They also asked, on the lots with the pipeline easement, is there enough space to even build a home on, specifically on block three, lots twenty-one to twenty-four? I forwarded these questions as well to PEC for them to review. Kansas Gas reviewed the preliminary plat and had no conflicts. Cedric County Fire District One asked if Wheatland Drive would have a future access connection. They mentioned that Section D one oh seven of the twenty-eighteen IFC requires the following one or two family dwelling residential developments, where the number of dwelling units exceed thirty shall be provided with two separate approved fire apparatuses, access roads, and shall meet the requirements of Section D one oh four point three. I forwarded these questions as well to PEC for them to review. Evergy emailed requesting additional fifteen-foot utility easement as marked on the attached plat marked in pink on the map that you have. They also suggested a streetlight placement marked in yellow on the marked plat. They asked to mark any changes, additions, or removals of suggested lighting placement to sign the marked plat after there were any changes, and to send an electronic copy to them back for their records. The preliminary plat generally meets the design standards and requirements of the Hayesville subdivision regulations. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat long as the applicant addresses the issues listed in the comments before submission of the final plat. And the applicant is here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff first? Okay.
Good evening again, Rebecca Melius with PEC, agent for the applicant, and I will briefly, um, kind of summarize the responses that we have developed thus far and, and prepared. So in general, obviously, County Public Works was addressed that this is annexed. With City Public Works, uh, we're in agreement with renaming the name to Circle in lieu of, uh, Court, uh, and adjusting, making that adjustment appropriately. Their inquiry on the sanitary sewer, our proposal is to tie in to the sanitary sewer to the south. Uh, we'll tie in as close as possible to minimize the amount of extension, um, required to create less maintenance for city in the future. On the lots with pipeline easement, so just in full transparency, as you can see depicted, there is a sixteen-inch high-pressure gas line, by Black Hills Energy that dissects our property. Nobody wants to know how much that costs to relocate, so we are working around it. Uh, we have gone through and laid out, um, every single lot with one of the proposed, uh, building footprints that are, um, addressed, from the development model, and a, one of the options fits on every single lot. So, I will caveat, yeah, my next comment to Cedric County Fire, when we met and reviewed with Chief Timmons, he mentioned, um, we will likely have to put some restrictions on some of those lots deeper than two hundred feet, because anything, sorry, that was me, paper. Anything two hundred feet from a road requires a s- a special fire apparatus, road, that we're not gonna wanna put a burden on an individual homeowner. So, there will likely be a, a covenant on a handful of those lots that they can build non-burnable structures on the backside of that easement. So, a technical detail that probably doesn't impact you guys, but just in full transparency there. So moving on to Cedric County Fire, we did meet with them, I mentioned that during our zoning case, uh, their desire, because we, we cannot meet two access openings within the amount of space that we have frontage along Meridian Avenue. The, the comment from County Public Works, uh, we are willing to address, and we're proposing to shift our drive to provide the appropriate amount of access separation from the existing driveway, um, to meet the three to four hundred foot separation, but that does, we're, limit us, we cannot put in two driveway openings. So with that, we met with, uh, County Fire, and we are proposing to widen our street opening to allow for two fire apparatus roads on either side, um, basically enough that if they had to, they could park a fire truck and still get a fire truck passed, park a fire truck and still get a fire truck passed. So it's a lot of pavement, but we're, we're in agreement with them on that. The other caveat is that, from the transition of duplex to single-family, um, there along the south side, that no parking would be allowed. We will install no parking signs with the construction of our pavement, um, that allows the guarantee to the best of their ability that they're not gonna have to blow a car over as they go serve, um, serve the residents there. We have been in coordination, so then jumping last to Cedric County Public Works, um, as I noted, we will be making an adjustment on our proposed final plat submittal to realign for the proper amount of separation, um, we're close, but we'll adjust it just a little bit to help clarify. And we have also been in detailed coordination on drainage. So let me just take a quick moment to identify this. You'll see the west twenty acres of this plat is, is shown as reserved. That's because I don't wanna com- commit to a developer that I can, can plat all of it, because I, I can't. But through our discussions and our coordination with those city and county staff, we have not finalized just how big that pond needs to be to be able to meet the minimum requirements, um, and ideally exceed those minimum requirements, because we're well aware that drainage is a concern in the area. So, we will be, uh, not sending any more water in any more concentrated of an effort to the adjacent property than is already happening in an undeveloped condition. We will be, that will have an outfall structure that'll, that'll slow that water down for the, the release of that water. And all of that is gonna be a coordinated effort with other projects that are happening, um, in, at the city and county level. So, as Andrew said, that reserve may in the future get split off for, for some parkland or some other things, but there will be enough space for drainage that will be a coordinated effort with city and county staff. I believe the rest of them are, are minor technical details that will definitely pick up, um, clarifications from the county surveyor on right-of-way notations and things along those lines. So, other than that, um, we're in agreement with all of staff comments, we're happy to pick those up and plan on, um, addressing so with our final plat submittal, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the commission has.
No questions?
I don't know if I missed it, what's the plan with the Wheatland Drive, the dead end there?
So, subdivision regulations require that we have a stub if the west twenty acres ever was to develop. But the intent is that you would then be able to extend a continuation of a public street. Typically, um, if we knew what was gonna happen within Reserve A, that would be at the west end, Mr. Dugan owns the property to the west of us, and should he ever choose to develop, that way he has, his development has access all the way through to Meridian. That is a, a minimum subdivision regulation for the connectivity of developments. Yep, so, again, Reserve A is kind of a placeholder, um, for the, you know, a minimum of, of drainage, but then allows, it could be replatted with additional residential lots or things along those lines if, if the development encourages that, if there's enough interest, um, as it, as it builds out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Then I would entertain a motion.
I'm moving the planning commission recommends and approves, uh, revision to the land use map for the city of Hayesville, city of Kansas.
No, we're on the preliminary plat.
Oh, sorry.
Item five, B.
It would just be approval of the preliminary plat as presented, that's all we really need to say.
Sorry?
The approval, make a motion to the approval of the preliminary plat as presented.
Approval of the preliminary plat as presented.
Have a motion in second to recommend approval of preliminary plat as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I abstain. Five C, we have a public hearing for the land use map. So I can do it again. Protect the rights of all parties involved, and in order to create an opportunity for everyone to speak their opinions and present information, the Hayesville Planning Commission follows specific procedure in reaching a decision, copy is available by the door. We now formally open the public hearing to consider revisions to the land use map for the city of Hayesville. Staff, please present the proposed changes.
Before use the recommendations for revisions of the Hayesville land use plan. Staff is proposing the following revisions. Dorner Park should be changed to green to designate parkland. Copper Tail addition along Grand should be changed to yellow to designate the residential. County Lakes Park Reserve should be changed to green to designate parkland. And the property located south of Seventy-Ninth, west of Meridian should be changed to yellow to designate residential. Staff is recommending approval of the land use map with the revisions as presented.
Up on the screen you will see the updated land use map, these are all the revisions that we talked about at the last meeting when we reviewed this, so.
I was looking for the map.
The old one? Oh, no, right here.
This one?
Yeah, it just took a minute to get up. So Chris, if you could point to the property along Seventy-Ninth there, um, just south of Country Lakes, which is, our system isn't working right at the moment, so. This property right here is the one we changed in yellow, um, that was one we discussed before. Everybody knows kind of where that is, if you want me to show you over the left side, it's a little hard to do, so.
I know.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about that? The other one is the Copper Tail along Grand, that we talked that has changed from, um, commercial to like, commercial to residential. Property out on hydraulic that is residential, and then the Country Lakes Park we changed to green, for green, for park use.
I have a question. I wasn't here for this, but you guys briefly described a Meridian corridor study in which the Hayesville Public Schools identified that they would prefer to have west side of Meridian and not the east side of Meridian, and currently it's carved out for the east side of Meridian.
No, I was wrong. No, I was wrong.
Is that correct?
I remembered it wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, I s-
I just wanted to make sure we took that into consideration.
It was like two thousand and twelve. It was a while ago.
Okay.
Yeah, and I do want to state that that wa, that plan was, is old at this point.
Yes.
That property has changed hands and sold recently, so I don't know if that's still on the table.
Okay.
But it, that use is still there. Like I said, this is the one that we have approved the boundaries last year. We have the ability to update the GIS map, so now it is all online. This is just basically going forward with this. We'll be doing a more full extensive of the comprehensive plan in the next year, but this is at least getting this up to date with the GIS, so.
Yeah, I think going along with this discussion, I mean, I don't have time to talk about it, but you know, there's been mention that as the city grows, making sure we're observing space for businesses. You know, we haven't had a large desire to put in those businesses in the past, but with more people coming in who might need that space, so is that something that we'll talk about?
So part of that was done with that Meridian plan. If you see those red corners along Meridian, that was all identified from that point.
Chris, can you zoom in a little bit on, hopefully he can hear me? There we go.
Yeah.
So the red is commercial. And one thing I want to point out that I can't always say, but Meridians or businesses require increased traffic, traffic counts. So to have increased traffic counts, we got to have increased rooftops. So it kind of all plays together, and yes, it is growth, but to get those commercial businesses like people want, you've got to have more housing. We have to have more rooftops.
I wish I could see the satellite overlay on this.
So that's Seventy-Ninth and Meridian, right?
I know, but I'm trying to think of the properties that know, Robin Howerton lives on the corner, and I can picture that house. And then the next property is the one with the big pond, or is that hers the one with the big pond? I'm just trying to think where those property, or where those color lines are, just so I know. Does it go all the way to Eighty-seventh, or is that halfway point?
Will you zoom back down, Chris, please? I believe the, our area of influence goes down to Ninety-Fifth Street?
Oh, no, I was just talking about the red, the area in question that we're talking about changing.
So that's existing commercial, right?
Yeah, that's not a-
We wouldn't have identified those big tracks as commercial that far away. It's got to be, what's that?
I, I think one of them, somebody just put horses on it, and then it goes almost to Bergman's, right? That's why I wish the satellite was on there so you could look.
I didn't look into those properties, but that's something I can look into for a future review.
Maybe Bergman's is already zone commercial for some of the stuff they did.
And that's actually county, so I would have to double-check it, so. But this stuff is just getting updated, what we know. We will be reviewing it once a year again, so.
One thing I have is that ground that I don't own personally is still marked as a park.
Will you go to the north, Chris? And that is still, go a little bit further, I need to buy a plug-in carpenter. That green area where he's talking about is-
North of Sixty-third.
Right here. So the top square, that green spot right there. He had pointed out that it is being used for residential, and I can't, and it's marked for green space. It is out of city limits. We, we can change it if you want.
I don't know, I just noticed it.
I actually didn't know that until you had told me, so that's something, if you guys want that changed, we can change it to residential use.
But it's in the city which, though?
Yes. So we don't have complete, yeah.
So we are in a public hearing, so if any member of the public wishes to speak about the land use map? Okay. Public comment is now closed for commission action. The floor is open to commissioners' comments. If we haven't used them all up already.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
There is not a motion, because my script doesn't have a motion on it.
Let's have a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay.
I make a motion to open public hearing.
Also, okay. I have a motion in second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Now, if any members of the public would like to speak, you are officially welcome to do so. Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close public hearing.
Also, okay. I have a motion in a couple of seconds to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Now, any comments from the floor?
I think I need to get my head around that roof, you know, rooftops business thing a little bit more.
So regardless of what type of development it is, what Georgie's trying to say is, any development from a, we need more businesses here is a good thing, if it's done correctly. So some businesses won't come unless you have so many trips a day in front of their store. Some tri, businesses won't come unless you have so many rooftops within a so many mile radius to be able to access whatever it is that they have. So I think what she's saying is, we need growth, and if we can do that well and manage it, which is our job, then that's what we're trying to do here.
So you're, the way that the map's done now, we take into account the number based on what's, you know, could be residential in our area. Estimate the number of rooftops, and then carve out the number of business lots that way?
No, it's not that technical. And, and a lot of this comes from Meridian corridor plan, like I said, but what you're really trying to do is, if this develops out, some things are already developed, and those zone changes won't change unless something comes to us to force that change. What this is, is kind of a roadmap for how we would like to see it develop, so that if somebody brings us a zone change on one of those hard corners along Meridian, and they want to put commercial there, we look at the zone map and say, okay, yeah, that's what we wanted in the first place, so we should probably allow that.
Now, it doesn't set it in stone, but that is what we had set out for the plan. Doesn't mean it can't change, but the land use plan map is your guide.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like, the trigger point for, as we start to hear more of these new developments and stuff, trying to look at if we want to add more commercial, we would just do that once a year? Because I mean, part of the way that we did make decisions on these things is, if it matches up with this thing, and so it's kind of, you can't do it, you have to do it before, almost.
Well, it should be case-by-case basis. This should just be one tool to use as part of that decision-making process, but.
And I know that sounds weird that we need more houses to bring more commercial, but that is, the number one thing they look at is traffic counts. They look at traffic counts. How many people are you going to have going by my store a day?
Any other discussion? If there is none, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll move the planning commission approve the revisions to the land use map for the city of Hayesville, City of Kansas.
I have a motion in second to approve the land use map as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye. Sorry, it took me a minute.
Thank you. No old business? No correspondence? Are there any committee updates? Any off-agenda?
I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but on our last meeting, it was a discussion about that property on Meridian. And one thing that's been bothering me is, it's been sitting empty for so long, and I've had my own dreams of what it will be. But now I realize with the protective overlay, that could not happen. I mean, sure, maybe it could happen, but it might prevent someone from even trying with that protective overlay saying no drive-throughs. Is that something within our purview to even address, or?
The city can approach them. We don't own the property, but the property that was up for the zone change last time first has to go to council, and they have to decide what the final decision is on that first. So we need to let that go through before we look at anything else.
But if somebody owned that property and wanted to develop it in a way that the protective overlay prohibited, they could bring it to us and have a new decision?
Yeah, they can come request a zone change to whatever, or to remove the protective overlay, just like they did.
Or parts of the protective overlay.
Yeah, or parts of it.
But it would have to go to the city council in order to-
What we've already voted on-
Right.
Has to go to the city council to be decided.
Oh, yes.
Are you talking about the adjacent properties that still have the overlay, if we could vote to remove that overlay?
Yes. Just the part with the drive-through, because those residents-
I don't know if we would do it without being prompted by some sort of development.
Right.
And the property owner would have to be in agreement if they would want to do that, so.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any other off-agenda? Item ten.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion in second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, everybody.